It's 10:17 and we have seven council members. We need three more for a quorum. We have Mr. Fuhr, Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Mizakowski, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Savornich, and myself, which means we don't have Mr. Padilla, Mr. Holden, Ms. Chick, Mr. Wax, Ms. Walters, and eight, three of you. The rest of you is up to you. Start this meeting. Yeah, vote it all in, vote it off in, yeah. All right, Mr. Wax and Ms. Walters are still in committee. Mr. Padilla and Mr. Holden, neither of you would allow us to start this meeting. So, even though we're still short one, at least one council member, perhaps we could begin the presentations and hear from Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, Members of the Council, good morning. I'd like to say we share a common goal as a city council and as residents of the city of Los Angeles. Simply stated, that goal is to strive to make Los Angeles a world-class city for all who choose to live, work, and play here. A significant amount of the work related to this end is tied to concerns about public safety. And when I say "public safety," I don't mean it in a one-dimensional sense, but it is broadly conceived when we talk about public safety. So today, we wish to focus on responsible pet ownership and the humane treatment of animals as a component of public safety. We know firsthand the threats posed by pet overpopulation to the health and safety of our neighbors. We are far too familiar with accounts of dogs biting, injuring, mauling, and even killing innocent passersby and children. We know that Los Angeles has fallen short in its treatment and care of animals. Every year, Los Angeles euthanizes tens of thousands of animals. This is a terrible blot on the city's image and reputation. On the other hand, we also know and value the companionship that animals provide. And in recent years, we've worked to do the right thing. The Pet Overpopulation Ordinance that was unanimously adopted by this body and Proposition F recently passed by the voters of our city clearly demonstrate a heartfelt desire to improve the quality of life for the residents of Los Angeles and indeed their companions. So I'm pleased to present a council resolution designating today, February 27, 2001, as Spay Day USA, calling upon the residents of our city to observe the day by acting responsibly, responsibly by having their own cats and their dogs spayed and/or neutered, by sponsoring this resolution. We go forward and send a clear message. The quality of life can be better, it can be improved, and you can do so by participating in this important effort to have your animals either spayed or neutered, and that of a friend or neighbors. Encourage them to do likewise. Now, Madam President, Members of the Council, in connection with this resolution, I want to also say that the work that has gone on in the Animal Services Department is not a small thing at all. And I think we owe Mr. Dan Knapp acknowledgement for all of his hard work. I believe that he's demonstrated dedication, vision, and remarkable stamina during his tenure as General Manager of the Animal Services Department. And although we have yet a long ways to go, I believe that we are in a far, far better place today because of the work that he has brought to bear, his balanced leadership. And so, on behalf of the residents of our city, Mr. Knapp, I want to take this opportunity to present you with a certificate of appreciation that simply acknowledges the work that you are doing on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and indeed a grateful city. Those who love animals and those who don't know that they love animals yet.
This is an overwhelming honor, and I really am grateful, council member, especially for the coupon at the bottom that says redeemable for six more animal control officers. That's a nice try. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Really, this goes to my staff. Without them, none of these could have occurred. And so, I'm very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Is that your staff massing behind you?
They are.
Well, now, who's out taking care of the animals?
The 10th member, Madam President, is out doing that.
Mr. Holden, yeah.
I didn't mention any names. Thank you very kindly. Now, therefore, it be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby designate February 27, 2001 as Spay Day USA. As such, the Los Angeles City Council calls upon the people of Los Angeles to observe the day by having their own cats and their dogs spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of another person's cat or dog. And we present this to the Animal Services Department for their very fine work with encouragement and hope that they will continue to do the same and even more.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. And thank you to all of you for your hard work under frequently trying conditions. We really do appreciate you. While we still have only nine council members, we are waiting for the Public Works Committee to finish its meeting or for Mr. Holden. And until then, nothing further can happen.
Start this meeting. Yeah, vote it all in for it often, yeah.
All right, Mr. Wax and Ms. Walters are still in committee. Mr. Padilla and Mr. Holden, neither of you would allow us to start this meeting. Presentation, so even though we're still short one, at least one council member, perhaps we could begin the presentations and hear from Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, good morning. I'd like to say we share a common goal as a city council. And as residents of the City of Los Angeles, simply stated, that goal is to strive to make Los Angeles a world-class city for all who choose to live, work, and play here. A significant amount of the work related to this end is tied to concerns about public safety. And when I say "public safely," I don't mean it in a one-dimensional sense, but it is broadly conceived when we talk about public safety. So today, we wish to focus on responsible pet ownership and the humane treatment of animals as a component of public safety. We know firsthand the threats posed by pet overpopulation to the health and safety of our neighbors. We are far too familiar with accounts of dogs biting, injuring, mauling, and even killing innocent passersby and children. We know that Los Angeles has fallen short in its treatment and care of animals. Every year, Los Angeles euthanizes tens of thousands of animals. This is a terrible blot on the city's image and reputation. On the other hand, we also know and value the companionship that animals provide. And in recent years, we've worked to do the right thing. The Pet Overpopulation Ordinance that was unanimously adopted by this body and Proposition F, recently passed by the voters of our city, clearly demonstrate a heartfelt desire to improve the quality of life for the residents of Los Angeles and indeed their companions. So I'm pleased to present a council resolution designating today, February 27, 2001, as Spay Day USA, calling upon the residents of our city to observe the day by acting responsibly, by having their own cats and their dogs spayed and/or neutered. By sponsoring this resolution, we go forward and send a clear message. The quality of life can be better, it can be improved, and you can do so by participating in this important effort to have your animals either spayed or neutered, and that of a friend or neighbors. Encourage them to do likewise. Now, Madam President, members of the council, in connection with this resolution, I want to also say that the work that has gone on in the Animal Services Department is not a small thing at all. And I think we owe Mr. Dan Knapp acknowledgement for all of his hard work. I believe that he's demonstrated dedication, vision, and remarkable stamina during his tenure as General Manager of the Animal Services Department. And although we have yet a long ways to go, I believe that we are in a far, far better place today because of the work that he has brought to bear, his balanced leadership. And so, on behalf of the residents of our city, Mr. Knapp, I want to take this opportunity to present you with a certificate of appreciation that simply acknowledges the work that you are doing on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and indeed a grateful city, those who love animals and those who don't know that they love animals yet.
This is an overwhelming honor, and I really am grateful, council member, especially for the coupon at the bottom that says redeemable for six more animal control officers. That's -- yeah, I'm sorry.
Nice try.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Really, this goes to my staff. Without them, none of these could have occurred. And so, I'm very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Is that your staff massing behind you?
They are, and it's --
Well, now, who's out taking care of the animals?
The 10th member, Madam President, is out doing that.
Mr. Holden, yeah.
I didn't mention any names. Thank you very kindly. Now, therefore, it be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby designate February 27, 2001, as Spay Day USA. As such, the Los Angeles City Council calls upon the people of Los Angeles to observe the day by having their own cats and dogs spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of another person's cat or dog. And we present this to the Animal Services Department for their very fine work with encouragement and hope that they will continue to do the same and even more.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and thank you to all of you for your hard work under frequently trying conditions. We really do appreciate you. While we still have only nine council members, we are waiting for the Public Works Committee to finish its meeting, or for Mr. Holden. And until then, nothing further can happen. Ms. Walters is here. Hallelujah. Call her all.
Bernson, Chek, Fuhrer, Galanter, Hernandez, Holden, Mizakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Forrester, Wax, Walters, Ferro, 10 members present, and in quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, finally, on Tuesday, February 27. The council meets Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 o'clock, except it's 10:30. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and also available by council phone. There are 15 of us when we have a full complement. And I think that's enough to get us started. Let us begin, Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Command mandatory resolutions for approval?
And those two.
Before starting the regular agenda, item number two, request from Council District 14 that this matter be withdrawn from the council agenda referred to the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee.
That's item two. All right, is there any objection to that being referred to housing and redevelopment? Hearing none, item two is referred.
Item number 12 on the regular agenda is a appointment, reappointment of William Luddy to the Board of Directors Metropolitan Water District. There's communication from the Chair of Commerce, Energy, National Resources Committee.
Members of the council, Mr. Luddy, you want to walk all the way to the center table here? Wave hello to everybody? Do I hear a motion?
I move.
All right, I hear lots of motions, but they're all for approval. Open the roll, close the roll.
Wait a minute, I have a question. I appreciate you giving a certificate.
Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That's approved. What's with on that one, please?
Ruth, I just want to say a word. I kiddingly was saying with Mr. Luddy, but I want to express my appreciation for the service he's given to the city, not only, not only on this water board, but as in planning and other activities throughout the years that I've been in the council. He's been a real stalwart for our city, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I would like to join in that, but I think he'd probably most appreciate our showing our appreciation by letting him go and pack.
Well, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thanks, Bill. All right, that's approved. Fourth with on that one. Next item.
Item number one on the regular agenda is item notice for public hearing. I understand there's an amending motion being circulated.
All right, I do not have any cards. Here comes the amending motion. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on item one? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. And item 1A is going to land on your desk momentarily. Mr. Holden is here.
Madam President.
Ms. Mizakowski.
I am bringing in this motion. This is a vacation in the 11th district of a street where we'd work things out with the property owner. The engineer had recommended it last August, but between the property owners and the property owners association, there was some concern that there not be any less, lessened setback as a consequence of this. And so, this amendment, in addition to moving the engineering recommendation, also requires that there be a very deep setback, larger than normal, as what is the norm in that neighborhood, and it not be changed, be recorded as a covenant, not be changed unless the association as a whole changes its covenants on all the other properties. So I move 1A for approval.
All right. Is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing none, open the roll on item one as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That's approved. Next item.
Items number three through 11 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. I believe there's a card on item number five, and a motion is required on item number 11.
We have cards on items 3, 5, and 11, all of which we have held a public hearing on. So unless I hear a motion to reopen any of those public hearings, I don't hear any motions to reopen those hearings. Are there any specials, members of the council, 3 through 11? All right, Mr. Holden has called 11 special. And maybe when it's called special, maybe you'll want to hear from the gentleman. He's in favor. Okay, any specials, items 3 through 11? Any others? Seeing none, open the roll on items 3 through 10. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items number 13 through 15 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, I do not have any cards on those. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on items 13 through, sorry, 15? Seeing, you didn't fill out a card on that one. On which one? All right. Item 13, we're going to call that special for a second while Mr. Green fills out his card. Items 14 and 15, members of the council, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number 17 on the supplemental agenda is item notice for pub, excuse me, item that public hearing has been held.
All right, item 17, members of the council? All right, Mr. Pacheco.
I would like to hear from Mr. Carey on this item, Madam President, and colleagues, and see where we are in this process, and maybe, at this point, modify or amend the motion as, as we appropriately need to.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Carey.
As I indicated to the council before, I worked with the city attorney and created an affidavit and sent a letter to the senator. I faxed both to his local office and to his Sacramento office, the, the letter and the affidavit. I made a, I've made two phone calls, one to Sacramento and one to a gentleman by the name of maybe who I dealt with before. I have not gotten any response. On Wednesday, we will probably be finalizing our 42 ballot groups, the printing. If the affidavit comes in, and that, that's making an assumption that I'll get it, at a later date, after we've printed the, the sample ballot and voter information pamphlet and the, and the actual vote recorder pages, we still have an opportunity to take steps to remove the name, but at, at some point, I'm going to have to sit down again with the city attorney to determine where we are in this process. But to date, I have received nothing. So his name will remain on the ballot as a candidate for Council District One.
Mr. Pacheco, did you?
If we adopt the motion today, I understand from my staff that there may be some questions as to the second part about notifying voters.
Correct.
If the, the senator further indicates his removal.
I, I would, I would have no authority nor want to tell a voter at, at this point that the senator is not a candidate for this election. Neither state law nor frankly, city law allow us to do something like that. If I get the affidavit from the senator, then I believe I can move forward to inform the voters. We have done this in the past with death situations, where the city clerk literally has struck names from the vote recorder and posted signs in all the precincts. We still obviously have a problem with absent voter ballots who come into our possession prior to any action taken by the city clerk to remove this. So again, as I indicated in my letter to the senator, time is of the essence relative to removing his name from, from the ballot. So in, in one sense, I would be happy to report back to the council when and if I get anything, but item two, I don't believe is, is going to, I, I don't think I can comply with item number two, and I hate to disobey a council motion.
Can I, I, I'm holding your time here, but when we spoke about this briefly yesterday, you told me, I thought, that there is in fact nothing the council can legally do, or that you can legally do, unless and until there is
The affidavit.
An affidavit that he has withdrawn.
A superior court could do something in this situation if somebody chose to go to superior court, but short of that, no.
Okay, Mr. Pacheco, it's still your turn.
Mr. Carey, if we trail this for tomorrow to get a status report, would that still give us an opportunity? Would that not interfere with your printing schedule? Really, what we're most concerned right now is your printing schedule.
Correct.
So what is the, is tomorrow at 5 o'clock?
I really can't say because we're getting the blue lines, the, the final print in. We've got 42 different ballot groups.
When do you get the blue lines?
Pardon me?
When are you receiving?
They come in daily.
Okay, so.
So I, what I would suggest, if, why don't we just continue this item from day to day until after it's, and I will give you an update whether I've gotten anything.
Okay, let's continue this matter to tomorrow's agenda.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez.
As I understand, the facts before us is, we have someone who qualified to be on the ballot, and that someone has indicated publicly to the media through a press release that they would not be seeking the office. But they have not communicated whatsoever to the city clerk. Now, because of those facts, we are now in a position where we could be printing a ballot that basically would have this candidate's name on it, and then after the fact, the candidate could submit an affidavit saying he's not seeking the seat. And if that was to happen, and the ballot was actually printed, what would happen?
If, if that were to happen, then I would, depending on when it happens in the process, obviously, if I get the affidavit on Election Day, I'm, there, there's nothing I can do. But if we get the affidavit in the next couple of weeks, we literally can strike that name from the vote recorders that are going to go to the precinct. We can cross it out on any absentee ballots that go out at the request of the voters. We would also post a sign in each of the precincts in Council District One indicating that the candidate has withdrawn.
And what's the potential cost?
Councilman, I haven't even arrived at that, because I don't know whether we'll ever have to get into that. But there is going to be a cost, there's no question about it.
There's a cost. And that is why we really want to define whether he's a candidate or not.
That's correct. But again, let me, I created this process because state and city law do not address it. State and city law provide a limited period for a candidate to withdraw. I, I think the basics for the law, both at the state and the city law, at, at city level, are to ensure that political game-playing does not occur primarily through incumbents withdrawing from a race, filing initially as a barrier to other candidates coming in. So state and city law have never addressed the situation where somebody, after the fact, wants to withdraw and, and has done so publicly through the media. But based on the advice of the city attorney, I, we created this process, and if the senator gives us an affidavit, we can remove his name.
Okay.
We will be looking at this for future changes, but again, there's, there's a balance you have to strike be on the other side in terms of how people can attempt to manipulate the election process. And I'm not accusing anybody. Let me state that for the record.
Mike, are you done? Okay. Mr. Bernson.
Yes, members of the council, in all due respect, I think our prime responsibility is to the voters. And for us to put out a, a ballot that has a candidate that because of not responsive after we've asked for an affidavit, is, does not serve the public. Now, you made the comment, Mr. Carey, that perhaps a superior court order could, could correct the situation. The real question is, do we have a responsibility before that ballot is printed at the last moment, if we have not heard from the candidate who has publicly stated in a press conference that regardless of who it is, I'm, I'm not just referring to Mr. Polanco, but any candidate, that they have not responded after they've made a public statement? It seems to me that we ought to try to, to get the court stack. Maybe it's the city's responsibility to do that, so that the voters are not confused. It could, it could basically turn the, the scope of the entire election by having somebody on there who's well-known, who's not in the race, and who knows what that, what might do? So I would suggest that, I just wonder if, if we ought to not look at the possibility of going to court if we don't hear from the senator in time, so that we can get an order that his name does not go on the ballot? He would have an opportunity to be in court and change his, change his statement if he so desired. Isn't that true?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that a motion. Is that okay with you? I think that we ought to explore the possibility, we ought to, we ought to, we ought to try to communicate with him today and tell him that we need the, we need the affidavit. And if we don't get it, we will be filing a, a motion with superior court to remove the name in the absence of hearing from him after he's made a public statement. And if he objects to that, he has the opportunity to appear and object to it in court. And that way, it can be settled, and the benefit will be to the people who are going to cast votes in that election.
Actually, all he'd have to do is submit the affidavit, and the whole thing would go away.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Mr. Ridley Thomas. Ms. Mizakowski.
Concern I would have about going to court is that I would like our going to court to have the court help us seek clarification. We, we ought not to say, have the court orders to take the name of the ballot, but since the candidate who has said something publicly still can be a qualified candidate, still could change his mind, we don't want to be in the position of forcing an issue other than forcing the decision. Okay, so, so asking the, the court, since we're not getting response to our city clerk, to seek clarification as to whether or not this person is a candidate.
All right, so, but now, just hold on here a second, because the first suggestion was that we trail this for another day and possibly until Friday, and let Mr. Carey report back to us, so that if he in fact has the affidavit, the whole court issue disappears. So I think we ought to do that before we send somebody off to a court requesting clarification. Ms., okay.
My original motion was that we attempt to communicate with him today.
Yes, no, I understand that, but the original motion was Mr. Pacheco, so I'm going to call on him again, because you look like you want to talk. Can you hit the speaker thing?
Yes, I do. My only point is, you have to factor in at least a 24-hour notice if we're going to go to court for an ex-party communication or an ex-party application from the court. That's my only point, would be if we adopt the motion today, it gives the clerk that buffer of a 24-hour notice if he opts to use our suggestion that he go to court to get some clarification. I'm just saying he had to buffer that in for his printing timeline. So I would suggest we adopt the motion today and ask for a status report tomorrow on where we are. And if he had to exercise the ex-party process for a hearing, then he will have, he'll have his options today.
All right, so just let me make sure I understand that. Then, then what we would be, excuse me a second, what we would be adopting would be a motion to ask the clerk to, we would trail this item in the council to tomorrow and possibly until Friday. But we would also concurrently be asking you to communicate again with Mr. Polanco's office and let him know that the council is concerned, that we want to clarify for the voters, whether he's in or whether he's out, and that in the absence of an affidavit, we will be asking a court to help us clarify it. And I think you ought to communicate that we'd prefer Mr. Polanco to clarify it. I don't really like the idea of going to court if we don't have to, but is that, oh, Mr. Holden? Just when I thought we had it sewed up, go ahead.
If you don't receive an affidavit, it's already been clarified. I mean, you got to understand.
Well, not unless it's in the mail. And I mean, I don't know about your experience with the mail, but.
Well, it's just like their fax, fax, fax. The fact of the matter is that, is he's been notified, the target date, that the clerk has to be notified that he is officially withdrawing his name from the race.
He has to give me an affidavit.
That's right. And so, we can almost be assured that he's received the clerk's notification. And so now, he's not, he hasn't responded, which means that could very well be his answer, I think. But he's given public notice that he's no longer a candidate in the race, and for that reason, that's an affidavit, could be an affidavit or notification in the, in the public's eye. Could be an affidavit or notification in the public's eye. And the way you get clarification is the original vote, a motion of Mr. Burnson, and then if he says, "No, that's not right," he's got to go to court and object to the action that we requested the court to take. So I say to you that to avoid all this confusion, let the original motion stand. Let the original motion stand, then if he objects to it, then he'll come to court and say, "No, I object to what the council is trying to do." Anything less than that, the court will rule, and I think it'll be in favor of the city. Leave it the way it was originally.
All right, my turn. I just want to remind you that if Mr. Polanco chooses not to run for the city council, he is going to be an important part of our state senate delegation for at least another two years. And I don't see any reason why we want to pick a fight with the guy. I mean, we're just trying to clarify what the story is here. So I would like to suggest... Uh-oh, I knew it would happen. I would like to suggest we go with adopting the motion as modified so that we are asking the clerk once again to communicate with Mr. Polanco's office, adding to your previous attempt to communicate that the council is anxious to clarify that, and we have only two ways that we're aware of to clarify it. One is an affidavit from him. The other is to get a court to just make a decision. Thank you, Mr. Holden. It's Mr. Ridley Thomas's turn.
Madam President, I concur with your point of view with respect to the modified version. I think we can arrive at consensus. I rise to seek clarification. Should there be no affirmative statement that is written such that you accept it as a legal document that would direct you to withdraw his name from the ballot? My understanding from you, Mr. City Clerk, is that the ballots are printed as planned currently. The election takes place. The voters make their determination based on the names of those persons who do in fact appear on the ballot. Now, let's just say that that happens. What then becomes the case hypothetically in the event of a runoff or anything of the sort? I'm interested in our thinking a few steps down the road here.
In the event of an outright victory-
Yes.
-at April, the council will declare those results, instruct me to issue a certificate of election. There is no timeframe for that certificate of election, but generally, since the term starts on July 1, 2001, I will issue that certificate of election fairly close to July 1, 2001. The charter provides if someone fails to qualify, within 10 days of that certificate being issued, there is a vacancy.
What's the basis of qualification?
He will have to take the oath of office for council member District 1. If he fails to take the oath within 10 days, there will be a vacancy, and we will be back in special election or appointment. Let's assume that there is not an outright winner at April-
Yes.
-and he goes into... And he is a top vote getter and goes into the June general election-
Yes.
-with another candidate. The charter provides, and it doesn't specify how naturally, a candidate may resign. If that were the... If he resigned at that point and did not want to participate in the June runoff, the number three vote getter would be in the runoff.
Thank you. Madam President, I think it's important pursuant to some of the remarks that have been made by a number of the members that we get clarification sooner rather than later because it is a distinct possibility that we can find ourselves or would find ourselves in one of the scenarios that Mr. Carey just described. I guess I don't have to detail how interesting that might be.
Yeah, I didn't say this was going to be easy, did I?
Well, we didn't ask you that question.
No, I know.
All right.
Or expensive.
Yes. Are we ready to vote? The motion before us is to trail this item and in the meantime, which will be till tomorrow, and in the meantime, ask the clerk to communicate to Senator Polanco's office once again regarding the affidavit with the additional communication that because we are anxious to get clarification, if we are unable to do so from him by the time we have to print, we have... The only other way open to us to get clarification is to ask a court to clarify what to do and that we depreciate his help. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that's approved, so it's trailed till tomorrow. You get to come back. Next item.
Item Number 18 on the supplemental agenda is a Rule 16 motion.
All right. I have no cards on Item 18, so is there anybody... All right, in that case, the public hearing is closed. Open the roll on Item 18, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That's approved. Forthwith on that, please. And that, I believe, brings us back to-
Item Number 11.
Item 11 called special by Mr. Holden. This has been here before.
Right, Madam President.
Would you hit the speaker button, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, members, Item 11 dealing with overweight trucks and the length of the trucks as well, the motion came from the Transportation Committee recommending the compatibility within the region. We learned at that time that the county length was 100 feet, and we were trying to modify the motion... I put him in the motion to make it 100 feet instead of 125 feet. Also, Madam President, I asked that Mr. Savornich and Mr. Hernandez, who had heard this matter in committee, asked that he go back to committee for reconsideration. But since that time, Mr. Savornich, we discovered that the county in fact did amend the length to 125 feet, which therefore means that the 100 feet that we were going to recommend would not be compatible with that in the region. For that reason, I would like to withdraw my amended motion and adopt the report as it came from the Transportation Committee in its original form, and that will make us to be compatible with the county, Madam President.
Okay, so just so everybody's clear, you're recommending the original committee report. Open the roll on the original committee report, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. We better do that forthwith, too. Okay, that brings us, I believe, to Item 13, which was called special in order to hear from a member of the public, Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody this morning? You know, Item Number 13, and I live on the border of the 13th District, and there is no council person in the 13th District. Soon as you have one, whether it be in April or July, I'm going to be blasting that person to make certain that the buses run more often along La Brea so you can get to that gosh darn Hollywood and Vine. I had a run there in the rain, that's why I'm all sweaty right now, so I wouldn't miss my train. There was no bus for 20 minutes at 9:45 in the morning. So, Item Number 13, Office of the Mayor and Personnel Department Communications relative to exempting one position of senior project coordinator at the Personnel Department from civil service provision. My question is, why? Why are you exempting somebody from the position of senior project coordinator, which sounds pretty important, from civil service provision? What provision? Is this to affect their salary? Is this to affect their insurance coverage? Why are we having civil service provision if we're going to have an exemption? What is this all about? Somebody pay attention to me, and if you don't pay attention to me, at least get those buses running on La Brea so I can get to that gosh darn red line without sweating. This is a $100 shirt, and it's all ruined. I paid to have it laundered. It's all stinky now. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, members of the council? All right, open the roll on Item 13, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
That is... That's approved. Forthwith on that. Which brings us to Item 16.
Item Number 16 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hear a public comment at this time?
Let's do public comment, and then we have one item left, which we will be hearing in executive session. So first, we'll hear on public... This is the time for comments from the public on items not on today's agenda but within the purview of the city council. Mr. Green, you're on again.
Well, this is not a happy announcement, a happy public comment I'm going to talk about this morning. You know, I was shocked, and by the way, I'm not pulling out of my race. You talked about Polanco and whatever the shenanigans he's doing. I don't know what that's all about. He says he's not going to run for this because he wants more time for the Senate, whatever. I don't know. I don't know what that's all about.
Larry, that's not before-
I never pull out. Ask my girlfriend. Anyway, you're not even listening, folks. You're not even listening. I want to talk about the crime on a very serious note. Terrible case happened the other day in the Wilshire District, my district. A woman was carjacked. Listen to this. This is not... This is not... The levity is over, folks. I want the city council to do something about something. It's in today's daily news. They're hunting for a suspect who kidnapped a woman at an ATM, a 22-year-old resident from La Cressanta graduate of USC. 22 years old, not even in the prime of life. This woman was kidnapped, she was killed. She was killed in Culver City. She was carjacked, taken to an ATM. I would like the city council to do something, offer a reward, find the killer. His picture is in the paper. His picture's been on the news. This man was seen driving in the car with the woman. This is terrible. This is not... This is everyday life. It could be you, it could be me, it could be me, it could be anyone. The epidemic of crime in this city is horrendous. We had two people killed in cold blood in the valley. Velaskis killed the day after he came back from a cruise. We can't go around bashing the LAPD and saying our cops are no good and at the same time expect safe streets. So we've got to be some more supportive of our LAPD. But you, the city council, whether I like you or not, and basically I have mixed feelings about the way you operate in the aggregate as one big monster. Individually, I love all of you, but together, you're not very fair sometimes, not having the 13th represented. You know what I'm talking about. I would like you to do something. Post money. If you need money from me, I'll kick in a few dollars because I can't stand this thought. And I know it's very hateful. It's very bad because most African-American people are not criminals, but the media puts a guy's picture in the paper, and it gives everybody a bad name. Now, you know how I feel about Clinton? You know that I call a spade a spade. You know that I'm against all corruption. You know that no one's above the law, whether it's a carjacker or Mark Rich or Carlos Vignali. So let's do something. You, the city council, to apprehend this criminal, and let's do it quickly, and let's send him up to San Quentin and fry like an egg. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and we're now going to go into executive session and do our housekeeping while we do it. So if you are not involved in the executive session, this would be a good time to begin your lunch break.
Motion for posting a referral?
Without objection, the motions are posted and referred.
Councilmember requests for... Excuse from council. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused on March 2 for city business. This meets policy.
All right. Ms. Zakowski moves unanimous vote.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on June 29 for city business. Meets policy.
June 29? All right. Mr. Hernandez moves unanimous vote.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on February 28 to leave at 11:45 a.m. A motion is required for personal business.
All right, well, Mr. Pacheco will make the motion, and we'll hope that we can get the council meeting started early enough so that he can leave.
And Councilmember Chick requests to be excused on March 16 to leave at 11:30 for city business. Policy is met.
All right. Mr. Padilla moves unanimous vote.
The desk is clear for Item 16.
All right, and we still have at least one newspaper scribe in the audience, so we can't do that yet. Do we have anything left on the desk?
The desk is clear.
All right. Everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Howard Koch, who passed away over the weekend. Head of Paramount Pictures, major producer with films such as The Candidate, et cetera, director for Maverick Program, ran the Sinatra Enterprises, also president of Motion Picture Arts and Scientists for several years. Very well-known and respected in the entertainment industry. I had the opportunity to become acquainted with him through my horse racing activities. And he was a major aficionado of thoroughbred horse racing and a real gentleman, and he will be sorely missed in our community, survived by his wife Ruth, son Hawk W. Koch, and daughter Melinda Blindkin.
Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, sad to announce that Ms. Roberta C. Paul, she died Monday the 19th. She was born in New Orleans, Louisiana, May 21, 1903. Lived a long time in Los Angeles for 65 years. Ms. Paul was an active member of Saint Cecilia Roman Catholic Church. Her husband, John Paul, passed away in 1954. From then on, Mrs. Paul remained independent, living by herself, never driving a car, but riding our city bus systems everywhere she wanted to go. Totally committed. Mrs. Paul was an outgoing individual who enjoyed parties, dancing, and her senior citizen club activities. They didn't have any children, but Mrs. Paul played a special role in the lives of her nieces and nephews, serving as a mentor and friend to them. She survived her nieces, nephews, their children, and grandchildren. Certainly, she's going to be missed.
Anybody else? Ms. Walters?
Yes, I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Mary Thompson. She was a young woman who had been very active in the community in which she lived and active in the larger community. She worked for Second Baptist Church directing a program for abused women, and then she went to work for State Senator Diane Watson, for whom she worked a number of years. She passed away on Sunday morning, and her services are tomorrow at 11:00 at Second Baptist Church.
Thank you. Call the roll. We are adjourned. See you tomorrow. Please try to come at 10:00.